One in your field out there and it didn't show anything unusual, so that one appears to be good. That would bring me how he does that. And that was the mountain.
So how many water do you have?
A lot, sixty or eighty or all. Yeah, but next spring.
So what do they do, the smoke test, what does it amount to? I guess I.
He goes down in there and if we wanna, you know, if there's two or three of them, we wanna test one, you'll put sandbag blocks the other ones off for ninety percent some smoke dung up there. He just got a smoke bomb, he drops it down there, puts a blower over the top of it and then we just walk along where the line is, sewer line is. If there's any cracks, it'll come up on the ground.
Oh, okay, that's what I was.
And if they're working properly, you look over at people's houses and it's coming up their stink like.
Okay, that's what I heard you talk about, I didn't know what it amounted to.
Yeah, that's what it does. You know, that was a really long run, way longer than most of them, because there's no manholes in the middle. By the time we walked down to Don Anderson's house, there's fire and then the smoke was coming out there, so. He says if there's cracks, it'll come up on the ground and you'll notice it real quick. But I was worried about some field title or something made a book to it, but there was nothing in the field or nothing, so. So that one's good, next spring we'll get it, that's the rest of them. Wonder if that diamond, the water's not really wet, don't work very good when it's wet, so. Garage door down the shop, broke this frame the other day, so I got a guy coming, I went to the repair department, trying to fix that, so. Doctoring it down, just getting out one door. And I called the garbage truck salesman, this is the other day, he's here. He's got back from me today, today, well, the company, mid-January, mid to late January. Four to six weeks, yeah. So all I got. Uh, one thing, Max, we gotta do a little better job of sanding than the, the other day when we had that icing chip. You know, especially the south side here, we got our. The sun never hits that, everybody uses that to get to the coach office and. Give us more sand. Yeah.
Do you do the parking area?
Yeah.
I was asking that.
Yeah. That's our responsibility.
I know she was worried, they'll get out coming there, so she was telling.
Didn't worry about her sidewalk?
Yeah, she did her sidewalk, too.
Yeah. Yep. Alrighty, thank you, Max. Alright, we're on the Mr. Shamrock now. If I read this contract right, you want to do it for five years for free?
Yeah.
Well, you said it. All those in favor? Sixty years optional.
No. Anyway, uh, there is a couple changes on here that I'll go over. The last contract was for four, I'd like to do the new one for five. Of course, on the pay or compensation, the curb side went up seven dollars a month after four years. And, uh, drop boxes went up thirteen dollars a pole. One thing I did add that has become standard in my contracts, each year, there's a three percent adjustment for cost of living increase. So other than that, everything else should be exactly the same as the last contract. And I guess the five years I went by, if you guys would like to stay at four, we can do that, too, but.
Can you stand with option to get out whenever you want?
We can put that in there, I do have, I honestly do have a state clog on some of my contracts, so. So some cities do prefer that, but you guys are so happy with me, why wouldn't you?
What about glass?
I am still picking it up.
And that will go for five years?
As long as the market's gonna change. Cause I still currently have an outlet, but.
So then when that, if that changes, then what?
Uh.
It probably won't affect anything other than, he won't be carrying as many pounds, but he's still got as many man-hours picking up.
Yeah, the glass is becoming a major.
Yeah, I know it is.
A lot of the towns are, I'm actually one of the few haulers around that still do.
That's why I ask, I knew a lot of.
I still have a hauler, I still have a hauler. Uh, my outlet is actually going down, I, it eventually ends up in Kansas City.
Okay.
So.
But I knew that was an option in a lot of places.
No, that's still, that's. So why, I don't think you glass.
There's no market.
No good market for it?
Really? You go out on the east and west coast, there's all kinds of markets, but in the Midwest, because of our fluctuation in temperature and stuff. See, they use it in playgrounds, uh, some track and field, use it in tracks. There are some playgrounds around here that do actually have glass mixed in and people aren't even aware of it because it's so, so fine. In other parts of the United States, like down south, they'll use it in the, in the actual highways going down the road, too, for fill material, but you can't do that.
So does glass wear out in a highway, or? You know, people are using that, they just.
They, not that I've been aware of, I mean, it sucks fine particles and it compacts so well with everything else.
Right, into a dust, almost, I assume.
Yep, and then it mixes right in with the concrete and. So, but like I said, there's a lot of playgrounds and stuff, you'd be amazed how many playgrounds have got ground glass mixed in, like with the ground rubber and you'd be amazed how much glass is in there. But, I don't know, they're, the DNR's been trying to figure something out, I don't know if they'll ever figure anything else out or not, but.
So it's working out pretty good, the curb side recycling for all the towns that you do?
Yep, I'm doing eighteen pounds right now, either curb side or drop box or both. It's going good so far, I mean, every so often I'll get somebody to throw, in the drop box, somebody will throw something, a toy or siding or something like that in there, but. Other than that, I mean, if they have it out at curb, we'll put a little note on their recycling, they have to be sorted, they'll try the door and if they're home, we'll talk to them.
The drivers are very nice, they'll stop in here, if they have a problem with a resident, they'll tell me. And I can talk to you, too, or if they call me, I know what's going on, so it's nice to please stop in.
Yeah, they're instructed to do that, so.
So I work with a guy that, that lived in Florida for a while, and he sold his recycling wood in one dumpster and then he sent it out to the curb.
That is called co-mingle, there is some.
And they, they take it somewhere and sort it out?
They do do it that way, uh, the cost is more expensive.
Yeah.
And then, uh, a lot of those co-mingle systems do not take glass because of the hazard. Cause people get fingers cut off and anything else, so.
Well, in Arizona, where we was going, a lot of times, they recycled it out to the dump and dumped it. Because the market was so bad or something.
Well, they do that and there's companies around, and some of the bigger companies around here do that, too.
They take it up sadly, they take it right out the dump and dump it.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of these bigger companies, I won't say who, but a lot of these great big companies actually own their own landfills and everything, so they can do. And I'm sure if you're talking down in Arizona, that's probably the case, I'm guessing it's a big, big company.
That kind of defeats the point on recycling.
But unless somebody, the state or somebody comes in there and somebody forces it, they, uh.
And they got mines down there that you'll never fail.
Oh, yeah, or never find. Yeah, no. So.
Um, we had, the first contract we had with him started in July of nineteen ninety-one, so we've been working with him for twenty-six years.
Yep, we started the recycling, that bit in, I thought it was eighty-nine, maybe it was ninety-one, some of the towns.
Maybe we didn't do it right away.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Cause I know our first one, very first recycling contract started, were in eighty-nine, so.
We started in ninety-one, so, we must be pretty fast.
Well, we can't find anybody else.
What? We try to do a good job and stuff, so.
And how come we gotta have recycling on the windiest day of the week? About every day.
I don't know if there's any certain days anymore, it seems like every day they're talking forty mile an hour winds again in the morning. It is ridiculous.
I have stuff left once in a while, cause now that I put it in a tote, they'll sort it out and leave it. Like, salt bags used to take, now they'll sort them out?
We won't take plastic bags now, that's a big.
But they used to?
We used to, now the end markets anymore, when they put it under conveyors and stuff. It gets into their bearings and takes out their bearings and so. Every so often, if, put it this way, if the plastic demand is very high, they won't say much, but if.
Okay, yeah.
But if, uh, the plastic isn't moving and the markets are slow, you, they find one bale or one plastic bag and one bell, they'll reject the whole similar.
They don't like it, huh?
No, they kinda, but it's interesting how, when they need the material, that is, is good, yeah.
Alright.
You take plastic bags?
No, I do not take plastic bags, that's what we were talking about. I mean, if somebody puts out.
We'll mail it.
It's a, it's such a shame that the plastic bags go to the.
It's kinda confusing, in the contract, it says we don't take bags, but if people put out like newspaper, uh, tin cans and stuff in a plastic bag, we'll take that and rip the bag open and throw it in the truck, but plastic, a bag of bags, we will not leave, we'll put them right on the, leave them right at the curb and then we usually call Kathy or something, let her know, so.
I like my people always putting a plastic bag in, you know.
That's not so big a deal, they don't care, they're.
Ron, if you clean your grocery bags out.
Issue, but they don't. Well, a lot of paper nowadays, they get, you'd be amazed how much that actually goes in the installation and stuff like that, so it's on a completely different conveyor system and.
So the windows envelopes, you like them or not?
No, we can take them. That little bitty plastic envelope, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Paper market go up and down, just like cardboard market?
Pretty much, it's, the paper market right now is down a little bit, but, and the cardboard market actually went down like, geez, twenty-five, no, thirty-five dollars a ton last month. So, China's causing all kinds of trouble. They control everything, I mean, so.
Alright, any further questions for Mike?
So we're gonna, so we're gonna get charged four hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Yep, and your old chart was for, uh.
For seventeen.
Four thirteen, so it's for like seven dollars. And then your drop boxes are when, they went up thirteen dollars.
To one forty-two.
Yep.
Okay, so we have two of those, right?
Yep. And we've done dump, here lately, we've been actually dumping them, some of us were dumping both of them here lately, they're getting used quite a bit.
Yeah.
Well, now that they have to recycle card.
Yep, yep.
Cardboard's gonna get, we was, we was averaging a five compartment once a month and they have cardboard every other month, so I think the cardboard's gonna go up now.
Yeah, I think we've dumped it every month here lately, cardboard, the five compartments lately, but the cardboard's not, yeah.
So the, the three percent, is that gonna be on top of the, the four twenty, or on the total?
Oh, it'd be on top of the four twenty for that section and then the one.
And on top of the one, so it's on the whole total, yeah.
Okay. So whatever he's gonna charge us for dumping, with the, the big dump, whatever, plus that.
It'll be one forty-two and then what, three percent to that and three percent to the four twenty.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Every, every year?
Yes, starting the second year. I've had that pretty much standard in a lot of my contracts and I guess I just never noticed that it wasn't yours to be truthful, so.
Okay. I've entertained a motion.
And we haven't raised it, like I said, the last four years.
Yeah.
A motion to approve a Shamrock recycling contract for five years is presented to us? I'll make a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Mike.
Well, that's it, and then one thing on a side note, I don't know if it, it would, it don't pertain to you people right now because you do your own, but because I do so many towns recycling, there are a few of them that are starting to really push me on maybe looking at starting to collect their garbage as well. So I'm looking at getting into that, so if down the road you guys decided to do something.
We wanted a garbage truck to sell you.
Yeah. Well, if you had me do your garbage, I might be interested in a truck. Well, why would you sell a truck if you're gonna keep doing it?
We're getting a new one.
Oh, you are?
So we have a used one for sale, so.
What is the used one you have?
Ninety-one Chevrolet Gas Top Gear with a bleach Santa Cruiser, I believe it is.
Wrench and everything on it?
No.
Guess anything's possible if the price is right. You wouldn't, you couldn't trade it, they wouldn't take it in on trade?
No, they got no market for them.
How old is it, ninety-five?
Ninety-one, I believe.
I'll give it to you after five years of recycling.
Two or four, I don't know.
Early nineties.
Trade it in our bill.
Yeah, well, I might, I can maybe get back, also better look at it if you do it right.
It's a twenty yarder?
Cause I've actually.
Your one is sixteen.
I actually got a couple that, uh, I use for cardboard only with the cardboard, cause I pick up, I got business routes for some of the biggest.
Yep, so, someday you're up here, take a look at her.
I'm just curious, if businesses, if you picked it up at the business, what do you charge them?
It would depend how many there is, because I, for me to come up, for one, of course, it's more expensive. I do do businesses in Armstrong, the first and third Friday, so there'd be a possibility, if you had enough, means I basically come through here to go to Evansburg to dump anyway. I could possibly tag some of your businesses in if there was some that was interested. And I'm guessing if it was like every other week, I'm trying to figure out what we charge them. I think every other week is like, uh, for cardboard, I believe it's twenty-one dollars a month and monthly, I believe it's eleven dollars a month. I believe is what my charge.
Is this pressured to pick up?
At businesses with the, that, but I mean, cause that's the one that takes up big space, but if they had like cans and, we do do about ten other businesses that have everything that we throw right in with the curb side, so that's an option, too. So, but we'd probably pick that up on the same day as your. Yes.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Alright, thanks, folks.
So let's, um. Do we wanna discuss the rates for recycling now, or let Kathy do the math and come up with a little, what the new rate should be to break even, or?
Yeah, because things have changed since like last fiscal year, um, what I had on there, average, I kept up for last fiscal year was eighty households. Now they come twice a week, so that means, or twice a month, that means they're average forty households when they come. And for the month, it's gonna be. And I charge a hundred and ninety-one dollars a month. A lot of them don't recycle.
I've heard of them, sure.
You don't know how many out of that eighty, how many are the same, you know, you don't know. But then I was looking at it, this fiscal year, which is from July to December, six months, and, uh. Oh, now, I think it's, it's eighty, now it's a hundred and nineteen. So, instead of saying forty, forty households per time they're here, it's up to sixty. I don't share it, and it has a ton of. With cardboard, they have to recycle, it's a lot of.
Oh, that's good. So work over, um, you know, for next month, what?
Yeah, now that I know the rates, I can kinda give you an idea.
You don't have to take that time for households?
No, I'm, you gotta figure, our five compartment, or our cardboard, we'll be dumping a lot more.
Yeah.
We only did it five times, well, now. Cause there are people that don't live at the curb and take it down there.
Yep, so, alright, so have that ready.
It's gonna have to go up.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's gonna have to go up even the second year, there's gonna be two, three more percent on top of everything.
Yeah.
So, next five years, every year it's gonna have to go up.
Well, maybe not, if we, the first year we raise it to take in the, account the increase from the second year, then.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if it balances out, or, or we're ahead a little bit, as of the first year, yeah.
We'll just have to look at.
Yeah.
And it's hard to predict how much it usage is, you know.
Yeah, this was really close, but not.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, it's on the right side anyway.
Right, I mean, that's really close, yeah.
But the thing, and that's why, and I've said this before, where I encourage residents to curbs side, and there's where it's, it's so much easier to take down there and I try to explain to them how it costs, because we pay for every resident already, whether you use it or not, so why should we charge twice?
We're not charged twice.
Well, we gotta dump, if we have to dump that now, because they're not recycling at the curb, right? Then we have to dump that at what?
Yeah, yeah, well, they are charged twice.
Yeah, that's how I feel. And I already paid for it.
What do the businesses charge, or get charged, three dollars a month, just like their family?
But you won't, they don't pick up?
They don't stop at my house, my business.
Well, see, well, we tried this one other time for, for commercial, and that's why I was asking them, they charge the commercial businesses so much. It was ridiculous, and that's why you ended up getting the bed down.
A month, wasn't it?
Huh?
Went like sixty, seventy-five bucks a month.
Oh, yeah, that was ridiculous.
And we don't have anybody, other than the elevator, that generates a lot of recyclables, Steve.
Steve, yeah.
Steve does.
Steve does a lot of cardboard.
Yeah.
What if we didn't have those compartments, and pick up garbage in a business and, and then have, just do a cardboard, and not even have that?
But I don't wanna pay twenty-one dollars or more a month.
Huh?
I don't wanna pay X number of dollars.
Well, he's saying that businesses don't recycle, they can throw it out, but the cardboard they have to take.
Yeah.
But what else do the businesses take besides cardboard?
Very little, yeah.
Very little.
Very little, it's just cardboard.
Right. That gets pulled down there so fast with cardboard, if they didn't have anything else down there but just cardboard, you're gonna understand.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
What I'm saying is not, if we didn't have, just have a cardboard, period.
Yeah, and then the residents wouldn't.
And they'd shove it all in the cart. Well, I would hope, yeah, I would, too. But you see what I'm getting at, you know.
That's what you're saying, why have the five compartment?
Right.
The main reason we did that was for the businesses.
And I see cars down there that I wonder if they're even in town, but.
That you don't know where the actual recycling came from?
No.
Just because somebody dropped it off from out of town, doesn't mean they brought it in from out of town.
So impol, that, the country people have paid for the recycling, where did they drop it?
In the five compartment.
Charge seventy-five.
Alright, let's. Okay, we'll, the rate increase till next month and we'll think on this. Moving on to item nine, discuss possibility of museum in Rinkstead. We have Mr. Ron Wilson here, wants to talk to us. Ron?
Thank you. She's okay for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're thinking, I was on the council from seventy-six, eighty-two, and there was Roland Waker and Chuck Hamlet and Kitty Davidson. And they're all gone, Robert Wilson.
Must mean you're one of the younger ones.
Yeah, I was pretty young, I think, so. Thank you, I just wanted to maybe, to do a little brainstorming here and. Um, and maybe I'm just. Uh, where to start? Uh, back in seventy-five, when I, when I came back to town, I, I started, I think, trying to get, uh, take the, uh, railroad depot and convert that to a museum and, and, you know, and fix it up and stuff again, and, um, and it was going pretty well in the, uh, at tha, at that time, Elle Sorenson was the president of the, uh, Danish group and she was against that and, and she, uh, pretty much told me to forget that, that idea and, and, um, and so, uh, so it was, it was forgotten and, um, I still wish now that I would've tried to, tried to get, save the railroad depot, but that's past. Anyway, uh, Larry, Larry W, 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 Lee Hansen came, came to me and told me that they wanted to sell the, the house and I'm not, I'm, I'm not acting as a Realtor or getting paid anything, they asked me if I was turning on Facebook and, and to see if we could find a good buyer and they, they didn't want, did just anybody buying it. And, uh, so we, we've had some prospective buyers, but, uh, no one that, that Larry W wanted to see buy it, but they, they kept telling me they wanted to, uh, have a museum, it would be, you know, I suppose it could be converted to a museum. And, you know, I, I agreed with them and so, and that's when I got, I got thinking, Roy Holman, uh, contributed a hundred thousand to the Esther Room Museum and he contributed fifty thousand to the Rinkstead, or the Armstrong Museum. And at the time, when he was setting that, that up, he told me, I wish Rinkstead had a museum. So, I know that if he was alive, he would've contributed some money toward that, so I, I got, so I talked to, to Larry W. So what, what I'm here for is to, to see if there's any money left from the Holman money that, that could be used toward, uh, toward a committee, uh, we, we put, put together a Rinkstead, a museum committee and buy that and convert it to a Rinkstead Museum and have it support itself, just like Armstrong and Esther Room does, so, um, I guess that's where we started there, there, they said they would, uh, they could let it go for fifteen thousand dollars and, uh, and so I guess that's where, um, I just thought I'd bring up and see what the council's thoughts on, um.
What is, um, Armstrong Museum's operating cost or profit per year, or cost per year, or?
Well, they've, they've been existence for, for quite a while, I don't, I don't know what it is, um, but it's, you know, every museum is a little bit different, um, um, too, and plus, um, I know, I know they're all tax exempt as far as the property taxes, but, um.
But, well, how do you generate the income to keep it running?
Well, you ju, you, you, you sell memberships and you, and you have fundraisers and you continue.
Because, there's cost in Armstrong, they can't give you like five hundred dollars a month.
Of what, um?
Their expenses. Yeah, you know, by the time you're, gas and electric.
I talked to one on, and their board, and he says five hundred, but he said, I don't know if that would cover.
Yeah.
So you gotta have enough income to offset that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and mo, most of your income, actu, actually, uh, I talked to one of them, too, and he said, I, I didn't ask him what their actual expenses are, but most of your income comes from out of town, uh, from people that, that grew up there and, um, and want to support it, et cetera. And it's like when we had, I, I headed up the fundraiser for the, for the St. John Church Memorial and, uh, ninety-eight percent of the money we, we got came from out of town, it was people that grew up here, but the, the local people did, did little name much, but it was, uh, and we raised fifteen thousand dollars there and very quickly, it, um, it all came from out of town. So, I guess we're, we're just, you know, we, we don't wanna, it, it doesn't, we're not asking the, uh, house to be in the, the name of the city or anything. We're just, uh, you know, I feel confident that, that we can, um, we, we can keep it running, but, uh, but, uh, you don't know till you, till you try it, and, but I also think that, that, that we need to have, uh, have history in this community and, uh, and, um, you know, I have a few things already that I'd like to donate to the, to it if we, if we had one, but, uh, I just wanted to see if the, uh, the council had any interest in it at all, or, um.
Well, my personal opinion is, is, uh. Well, my personal opinion is, it's a poor location handicap wise, you got that big hill to get your guests up. There's no parking in the driveway because it's a shared driveway with Irma. And she can be also set up for, she can't get her, in or out of her driveway.
Is there a bathroom downstairs in any of those houses?
Some of those houses, they're, they're not. So, it's not really handicapped accessible, the structure and.
The one thing, we're short of houses now. We need, we need houses, we got, you know, I don't, we don't, hardly have anything empty, I don't think.
No, there's just one house and.
That's.
All the other ones.
But I, I know Roy's been in favor of some of those, but I'm not sure about that particular property.
Yeah, the rea- the reason Rob, because it's, the, the house has really neat woodwork and, et cetera.
I'm sure of that, and it's old.
And it, and it, yeah, fits it nice. As far as hanging up, there is, you know, I suppose from the intersection, the sidewalk, there'd be a straight shot, but, uh, but yeah, I, I understand that and, um, but, uh, anyway, so I just, if the council is, isn't interested in that, that lo- location or possibly might be interested in a different lo- location, um, maybe a guy, person could build on to the the, uh, community center somehow, or if there's a different building on Main Street that could be used or something, but.